Good time, and we're gonna miss him tonight, but we're gonna carry on. I'm gonna do things just a little bit different, and it's just a tiny bit different, but I'm gonna, what I'd like to do is, prior to calling the meeting to order, I'd like to invite everybody, just for a moment of silent prayer. Since we're all kind of community people, I'd like you to please think of the folks in Ferguson who are having some really tough times getting their community back to order. And then, of course, our big city Dallas, it's got some scare going on with this Ebola stuff. Those things are kinda scary, and I'd like to, and then after a moment of a little silent prayer, I'd ask council member Dwight Henry to offer a little short invocation, then we'll call the meeting to order. Please pray with me.
Heavenly Father, we are grateful people for the community in which we live, and thank you that your word tells us that we, it will keep us in peace if our mind is stayed on you, and help us to pray and believe as Jesus taught us to pray when he did, as he prayed. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from temptation; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and glory forever. Amen.
If you'd rise for our, oh, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If you rise, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the third item on our agenda is just consider approval of the agenda as presented. Do we have any changes in?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I always do that. Kathy, Ms. Kathy, would you go ahead and give us roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Four present, one absent.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kathy. Now, again, item three is consider approval of agenda as presented. Do we have any additions or deletions?
No change.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, let's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
And then item four mentions this, do we have, does any council members have any appointments, proclamations, presentations, or awards? Anything, Ms. Kathy, for us?
No.
Okay. So that moves us on directly to old business. Item five, 5A is consider approval of minutes of our council meeting that we held on October 2nd, 2014. Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? If not, let's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 5B is consider, and this is the second final reading on ordinance 0140140916. This is rezoning of 1937 North Dixie Avenue from RS10, which is single-family residential, to RD, which is a single-family and duplex residential. And it's mentioned here in our, in our agenda that the planning commission denied this request in this past August, and the property owner, Mr. King, was appealing this decision to our city council. This is sponsored by Mr. Mills.
Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, this is the general location, site that we have looked at, and the aerial view of the property. And the ordinance has been revised to reflect the council's approval on first reading of just the first 110 feet in depth of the subject property, so that a maximum of one duplex could be constructed on the property. This is the existing zoning, future land use for the area, and this is the area that was approved on first reading. And as you noted, Mr. Vice Mayor, the recommendation from the planning commission is to deny by a vote of six to two. The property consists of 1.3 acres. The portion approved for rezoning at our October 2nd meeting would consist of approximately 11,000 square feet, which would leave over an acre of the property still zoned as RS10, so this, all this back portion here would remain as RS10. While the dimensions show 130, not 110, should be noted that that includes 20 feet of right-of-way, so it is 110 feet in depth on the property, which gives us approximately 11,000, and all that could be constructed on there would be one duplex. The planning department recommends for approval of the rezoning as approved on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Questions?
Mr. Mills, have you heard any of the?
No, I've not had any calls since first reading at all. I don't know if that's a sign of acceptance, or, but we've not had any contact at all.
I think the intention of the council, when we talked about this last time, was try to get a win, maybe a win-win for both, for both parties. I think that was the attempt, and, but, not having, in your opinion, not having any response from that, is that, is that thumbs up, or you really can't tell?
I'd hate to guess, but I would assume that it's an acquisition to what's been done.
So again, James, as it's been amended, and as we reworked it last week, the most that could happen here is one duplex on that property, and that's, that's all that can happen.
The most that could happen here would be, would be two units. Now, they could still do a flag lot and do one house here and one house here, but that, if it's single-family, that's the most, but either that, or you could put a duplex here, and all this would have to remain as a buffer area. Because in that RD zone, single-family's still allowed, so they could choose to do two houses, but no more than two dwelling units could ever be built on this property under its current, current, or proposed zoning configuration.
They'd have to do a flag unit, second house.
Yes, and that would have to, yes.
Yeah.
But if this rezoning is approved, they could put a, tear down the existing house and place a duplex within this area, and then that's all that could occur. They would not be eligible for a flag lot then, because, again, you must have at least 100 feet. And again, I noted this at first reading, there's not been a survey of this, so if the property is less than 100 feet, then they will, they will not be able to do a duplex, because that is a requirement.
James, in the area that remains RS10, that's nearly an acre, isn't it?
Yes, it's approximately, the whole track was 1.3, and by doing 11,000, it comes out to 0.25, so it's slightly over an acre.
Right. And that slopes away, away from Dixie, so I think there's enough bump.
Aerial photograph, I think, you can see this is a wooded area, and it does slope. About right in here, it starts sloping on.
Yeah, there's this pretty severe elevation drop from the house to that wooded, that wooded area.
So what you're saying, if they put a duplex in the front, if the rezoning goes through, they could not put a single-family dwelling in the back?
That is correct.
Yeah, but previously, what they were, what they wanted was to put in, you know, another set of multi-families, and this, or, something that the neighborhood did not want. We, I think our intention was to try to find something that gave, gave something to both parties, and I thought that was, I thought this did a pretty good job. We appreciate your suggestion on that. So if you haven't heard anything, I think we're.
I think the Pittsburgh Big Spring Circle are protected, you know, I think they've got more or less what they wanted, and the property owners got, you know, where they could do something else.
Well, any, any more questions? Are gentlemen ready to vote? Okay, if y'all ready to vote, let's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Well, since we don't have any consent agenda, we're gonna move on to items, item seven. It's our new business. Item 7A, 7A is consider a resolution R141023, authorizing a submittal of a multimodal access grant application to TDOT for installing sidewalks along State Road, State Route 24, and that's East Spring Street, committing a local funding match and acknowledging the responsibility of, for future maintenance. And again, this is sponsored by Mr. James Mills.
Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, this is a general location of where we wanted to pursue this grant for. The red on here is where we would like to obtain a grant from TDOT through their 2014 multimodal access project, or grant program. The grant, if awarded, would install approximately 5,400 feet of sidewalks along East Spring Street. It would also install 1,245 feet of sidewalks on Carlin, and another 965 feet along Raider Drive. It would also include crosswalks where necessary. Projects can receive up to 95% in state grant funds for up to a maximum of $950,000. Our Public Works Department, Greg Brown, has prepared a preliminary cost estimate for the proposed project that's depicted on the screen, and the estimated, rough estimated cost for this is $96,800, so just slightly under a million. And, of course, the requirement for us is 5% of the match, which would be approximately $50,000, slightly under $50,000 under this cost estimate. The city's match must be in cash, cannot be through in-kind, it has to be a cash, in-cash donation, or payment of in money. And the commitment to, for the required funding match is also specified in the resolution, and the resolution also notes that we will be responsible for maintenance of the sidewalks if they are completed, and the planning department recommends for the council's approval of this resolution.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Gentlemen, any questions, yeah, for Mr. Mills?
James, a couple of things. I think you mentioned in the work session that, to the extent that the project goes over a million dollars, the city is liable for that.
Correct. The maximum, if the project does come out as, as we've estimated, anything over the figure, we are responsible for, the $996,000, we are responsible for that.
And just as a matter of curiosity, I know, obviously, this was not a budget item, so we didn't see it coming, so it wasn't in the budget, although it's a good thing it is coming, but how, where exactly, the $50,000 that we would have to pay to the extent of a million and the 5%, or if it goes over, do you crank up the printing press in your office, or?
This Shipley does that.
We payroll deduct it from your salary, or where did that come from?
Wouldn't get very far of it. I'll let Mr. Shipley speak on that.
My first guess is that we take it out of state street aid, out of our, we have about that much, those that each year for sidewalk improvements anyway, so we'd probably take it out of the state street aid fund, which is, comes from gasoline tax for streets and sidewalks, basically.
So there is an account that it would be appropriate to take it from that already exists that wouldn't involve any new taxes?
It might require a budget amendment, but the money's in there to do it.
Okay.
There may not be that much appropriation.
Thank you. You're safe, James.
One thing my wife asked, from reading the newspaper article, was that it can't be, it has to be just one project.
Yes.
She wondered if it could be two or three projects for sidewalks, but, but it only can be one project, that needs to be.
That's correct. We, when we first heard of this, we looked at several different locations, smaller projects to connect, we looked at Interstate Drive up on Willow, then after checking with, with TDOT, it has to be one contiguous project. And that's, that we thought for this area would get our best, best bang for our buck and serve the most people, provide, it's important for this grant to provide connectivity, and that's what, what's really attractive about this location, because we connect our downtown to another commercial area, plus we go through a heavily populated area, the Saxon Apartments, which has over 250 units, plus, we connect to Avery Trace School, the Cookville Community Center, and the YMCA. So there's a lot of things that will help us in being competitive in the grant process.
Great. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mills. Any more questions, gentlemen? Okay, I've seen, no, no further questions, we all should vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to item 7B. 7B is a, consider authorizing the purchase of property on 125 West Sixth Street for Cookville Regional Medical Center, and this is sponsored by the RMC, and Ms. Paul Court's up here.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. On behalf of the Cookville Regional Medical Center, Board of Trustees has approved the purchase of property that's located on, as mentioned, 125th West Sixth Street, and aerial map here located shows where that property is. The actual site of this property is right across the street from the, that is the right one, right? That's, that's a, yeah, okay. Yeah, Sixth Street runs right here, so it's on the north side, main hospital entrance is to the south here, so the property sits adjacent to a current parking lot that we, we have at the medical center. It's approximately 15,000 square feet in this property. Purchase price that has been approved by the hospital board is $195,000. Due to some circumstances in the past, this property is an estate, being purchased through an estate, and there has been some legal actions with that, so I think it would be appropriate for the council to approve this, subject on a title search, and then also subject to purchasing title insurance from that. I think that was something that Mr. Raider and I discussed earlier, and I think that would be a proper motion on that, to have it recorded as such.
Motion to approve with title insurance.
Second.
We can just include that, or we may have an amendment to the motion in order to do?
Well, we haven't had a motion yet.
Okay.
We haven't had, need a motion to approve a contingent upon getting a clear title with a title insurance policy, and, of course, the deed has to be in the name of the city of Cookville.
Correct. That's my motion.
All right. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Ms. Kathy, did you get, did you get that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Any questions, council members?
Is the estate, is that, is it in a trust, or do you know?
Um.
You said it's part of an estate, I'm just wondering.
Part of estate, Ruby Crawford, who owned the property, has passed. It is owned now in the estate of her two children.
But they didn't put the property in a trust or anything, it just?
Not that I'm aware of. There has been a legal settlement for half of the proceeds to go to a defendant of a case that Ms. Crawford had against her, and Mr. Pat Fitzpatrick, I know, is representing that, so I think that's why probably needs to.
So there's no litigation?
Title search and a title insurance.
So there's no litigation pending that would prohibit us from going ahead and doing this, it's just a matter of how the proceeds will be divided?
That's, that's, that's my understanding correct.
But, of course, when Mr. Court gets his title search and the title policy, he'll make sure there's no problems with the title, or he'll bring it back to us if there's a problem.
That would be correct, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, that way, when we purchase it, purchase funds are transferred, we would have a clean piece of property.
Yeah, we want fee simple title with no encumbrances.
And the intention, the intention for this, we heard in the work session, was for just enlarge, increase parking?
The future, the future intent for this would be for, for parking, since it is adjacent to parking that we have today here, so this would be additional. And we do own the properties that are located kind of to the back of it, towards Seventh Street.
Actually, aerial photo makes it look good. It's, the real piece of property is pretty dilapidated, it's pretty, pretty bad shape, so that looks pretty good from the aerial, it's got a roof.
Yeah, the, the structure building on it is of no value.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Actually liability, because we'll have to tear it down.
Any other questions, gentlemen? No more questions? So if no more questions, I'll ask us all to vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item, item 7C. Item 7C is to consider, for us to consider awarding a bid for a chain leak fence for the police department impound lot, and this is being sponsored by our chief, Randy Evans.
Vice Mayor, council, we solicited bids for a fence, and received three bids. Clouds fencing was the lowest bid, of $17,500. What happened to my pictures? There they are. What you see in red, outlined in red is the existing fence, outlined in blue is what we're proposing to fence, so we're gonna add a little bit there to try to make the property a little more secure. Got some pictures here, you can kind of see, it's, it's in pretty bad disrepair all along the fence line. And as stated before, clouds fencing, $17,500, and I recommend your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions, or any questions?
Chief Evans, didn't the police department have to, before we, Public Works moved out of this facility, didn't we have the city rent lots to put cars on?
Yeah, yeah, to my knowledge, I don't know that we've ever had a property.
That you could control.
That we controlled for an impound lot, or storage, so for years, we've either relied upon the 13th Judicial Task Force to provide space, which we co-located some stuff there, or we rented space ourselves. Matter of fact, prior to getting this facility, we actually had three, three property, or three spaces we were leasing to be able to store stuff and, and protect vehicles. When we seize vehicles, we still have to protect those, and we're liable for those until we're awarded those and we sell them, or, you know, in some cases, we have to give those back, so we have to, we have to protect those vehicles as well.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, if no further questions, we all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Now, we're on to item 7D. And Chief Evans is sponsoring this, and this is a, consider, our consideration to approve purchasing a Telx IP dispatch radio console and camera from a sole source.
Okay. Vice Mayor, council, we actually got two, two separate items here. The first one being the, the Telx IP dispatch console, and that is actually on a statewide contract. The current radio system that we have, that we're utilizing is a Motorola MCC 5500, as explained in the work session. When we went to a digital format initially, when we went to narrowband, we lost bandwidth and coverage, which prompted us to go to a digital system, which the county went to, and EMS went to, and I think most of you know the story behind all of that, which gave us the coverage. But also, when we went to digitally, that digital format gave us, and those digital radios gave us some additional capabilities that the Motorola system are not, is not capable of utilizing. So that's the biggest reason, from an officer safety standpoint, gives us those features, and the ability to have some interoperability with, with highway patrol, who's on a different system as well. The console we're recommending, and again, it's on a statewide contract, is a Telx CSO IP, it's a, it's a IP-based solution. It's specifically designed for digital radios. It's the same system that the EMS 911 system uses, the sheriff's department uses the same system. As you can see there, we talk about portability. It gives us the ability, if, if we had a catastrophic event at the police department and our system went down, we can actually transfer our system to, to their office and actually stay operational within just a very few minutes. Again, it gives us some improved officer safety options, and being able to, and we talked about the officer down switch, or a distress switch, if you will, that's on our portables, that right now is not functional because of the base, the base unit, so it gives us that feature, again, an officer safety issue, and also gives us the opportunity to add a P25 radio to that system, so now we can communicate directly with THP. The total cost for the system and installation is $38,952.29. Breakdown on that is $31,061.25 is the actual radio system, and then $7,891.04 is the actual install. And I'd recommend your approval.
Second.
Motion, we have a motion and a second. Floor's open for questions, you guys have any. We really covered a lot of this in our work sessions, but look, I mean, this is something we need, it's gonna be, do great for our department, so if there's no questions, we should, let's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Next item, item is in-car cameras. As we discussed in work session, that's the model number that we're currently using, the digital Ally, Ally DVM 500 is no longer in production. The issue is, is obviously, there's no way, there's no guarantee that we could get repair parts. In fact, if you can already look at, we just actually put that figure up there, since January 2013 till to July, we actually spent $12,450 in just repairing the current radio cameras that we had in the cars. So they were really at the end of their life cycle. The recommended replacement is the DVM 800. It does have a five-year warranty, and that's parts, labor, any service that we need. You know, with, obviously, because it's a seven or eight near, near, seven or eight year newer system, video and audio quality is much better, it is in high definition. The system comes with five cameras, two, two front-facing, one facing the driver, one facing in the, in the cage area for the arrestee or suspect, and then also a rear-view camera, a backup camera, if you will. You know, this is the same, same company that we currently use. It is a sole source provider, they're the only company that actually provides a wind, a mirror-based system, and because of that, we have a 100% transfer of our data, so we don't have to pay for data transfer and that kind of stuff of our video, so that, there actually, there are savings there. If you went to a different company, you'd have to figure out a way to, to still maintain and control your, your old footage. Cost per those units, the car, the SUV, or the truck units is $4,179. We're actually getting a $750 credit back on our old camera systems, so part of my recommendation is that we go ahead and declare those old unit surplus as part of your motion. Of course, the total cost after the trade-in is $3,429. For those 59 units, $202,311. Of course, the motor units are a little cheaper, they're $2,900, we're getting a $200 credit on those, we need to declare those units surplus as well. Total cost, $2,700, and then those five units are $13,500. We talked extensively about body cameras. When I come to work session, we originally had five in there, you expressed an interest for us to find a way to, to get some more, and we've done that, so I'm gonna recommend that we purchase 25 of those units. Those units cost $740 apiece, and that's $18,500. Part of that is in the original capital outlay that was budgeted, and then a big portion, the remainder of that is what we're gonna purchase out of the drug fund, and it's gonna be $17,700 out of the drug fund to purchase those additional body cameras, and the dock, the docking station, which is $2,900. Lastly, we're gonna purchase 65 of the ViewLinks, and that's the, the linking unit that fits in the car that, that allows the body camera and the footage from the in-car camera to marry up, so that you have one data stream at the end of the day. Otherwise, we would be trying to marry those up. Total cost for those units, which are $395 apiece, is $25,675. We're gonna pay for those through some residual funds, primarily, those are funds where, that are available due to vacant positions that we haven't filled yet, so those funds would be available to use with a budget amendment to pay, to pay for those units. Of course, freight's involved. Total cost of the project, $263,584, and I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Chief.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that was a lot of stuff, but it's cool stuff. It's pretty fun. You mentioned surplus, I just have a point of order, do we need to, do we need to, like, make an amendment to have these replaced on surplus, or maybe, maybe our motion could be contingent upon placing these in surplus?
Well, when you make a motion, just include that the existing, the trade-ins will be declared surplus and traded in, and the new items purchased, purchased in accordance with this proposal.
All right, thank you.
So just all one motion is fine, and once we get a formal motion, then we can have a discussion.
Motion to accept this proposal with the old units declared with surplus.
All right, have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Okay, now, we can.
When will this be operational?
I asked that very question this morning, and they said their ship time's about two weeks. One thing that we, we did in preparation for this was we actually sent our IT folks to Kansas City to learn how to do the installs and troubleshoot these, so we're gonna save about $20,000 by doing the installs ourselves in-house, so that was a cost savings there for us, but.
So, once we get it in two weeks, then, when do they become operational?
Uh.
After the first of the year?
With your help, Dan.
Yeah. I'm all for this. I think it protects the police, it protects the public, it's a win-win.
We'll put, we'll go ahead and put the body cams in use immediately, 'cause, I mean, even though we're still, we're not gonna be able to marry those up. We're not going to be able to marry those up initially. We'll eventually get there, but obviously, we'll have 59 units to install, and there's some time involved there, so as quickly as possible.
A couple of quick questions. One, which is what I was going to get to. It's my understanding, based on what you told us in work session, this is study of the art of technology.
It is.
Does it get any better, I mean, in terms of just quality and performance? What will it mean? It is win-win, but at the end of the day, to the extent that we get this, and this is available, what exactly, specifically, in terms of what will it mean to the officers and what will it mean to the public that we spent a couple hundred thousand dollars to do this?
Well, I mean, and I think Dan can really speak to this. I mean, from a lawsuit perspective, it's just been a cost savings. I mean, and just... I mean, it's protection for the officer. And there's obviously... And Dan could probably speak to specific cases that where these videos have really played a major part in exonerating the Cookville Police Department and the officer involved. And just losing one of those lawsuits, we could buy all the cameras for everybody in the state, probably. So just it is a... Even though it's a very significant amount, I think it's certainly worth the cost, and the savings comes out on the other end in being able to resolve lawsuits in our favor.
Well, you mentioned... 95%, and I'm going to take that back, 99% of the activities of the police department, it'll just be taped and routine and taped over, and won't be a problem. But anytime there's an accident, anytime there's a serious arrest, anytime, you know, God forbid, there's a shooting or somebody gets tasered, we have... The police know that they have a video that shows exactly why they did what they did, and the public knows that they'll have confidence when they see how the police acted, that it was appropriate, or they can criticize it. So it's just documented their activity in these 1% of the times when police are in a critical situation. And, you know, the public knows that they need to behave, because they're on video, and the police know that they're being taped and videoed, so their conduct is all being monitored. So it's just, like I say, it's just a win-win for everybody, and if something goes bad, we've got good, hard evidence of exactly what happened. I've got a case right now in another municipality where this officer made an arrest, and there were... All this crowd was around, and the person had to be tased, and there was no video, no audio, no nothing. And now, he says, "I was justified, the person did X, Y, Z," but all the bystanders say, "No, that's not what happened." So then we're just in court, and it's, you know, they're calling the policeman a pig and everything else, and there, he's under tremendous pressure. And if we had the audio or the video, we'd know exactly what happened. And so this... It really makes all the difference in the world when a critical situation arises.
Of course, the other element to this is the evidentiary value of it. Prosecuting cases, you know, recording statements, recording illegal activity, DUIs, et cetera, et cetera.
Chief, you also mentioned a portion of this cost coming from the drug fund. For those who may not know, talk about where that drug fund comes from and how we are able to accumulate that and how we're able to get necessities with it.
Basically, that is cash or proceeds, vehicles, other items that are seized from drug dealers, drug activity, drug cases. And then they go through an administrative process once that seizure's made, and then those proceeds are then awarded to the Cookville Police Department, and that goes into a drug fund, and then by statute, then we can use those funds for this purpose.
Thank you.
And others, but this is one of them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would say the police, with smartphones and their technology, whether it be in Cookville and other areas, the police are being videoed with a phone anyway, whether it's invited or not. So having their own camera onboard, you could either substantiate or differ from what the person might edit on their phone, put on YouTube.
Yes, sir. Any questions? If there are no other questions, let's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. All right, we're on to 7E. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
7E, this is sponsored by Mr. Ronnie Kellys. We're considering awarding a bid for two split-deck trailers and two mini excavators via the water control department and electric departments. Mr. Kellys?
Vice Mayor and Council, the electric department and the water department both budgeted mini excavators in our budgets this year, and we collectively put them out to bid with a utility trailer to haul them around. We have opened bids. Plateau Truck and Tractor was the low bidder on the tilt trailer, $6,545. Ditch Witch is the low bidder on the mini excavator. You've got the collective number there at the bottom right-hand corner. The total for the electric department with the trailer with their options was $64,685. The water department's total with our options was $62,634, and we'd recommend your approval. Here's what we're talking about, little mini excavator.
Yeah.
And the trailer.
We've... We had looked at them last year and didn't pull the trigger on them. The cost, and what we do, and Tony does, is we're in a lot of yards sometimes. Big backhoes cause lots of disruption and damage. Backhoe costs $90,000. This is about $49,000. So we felt like it was worth trying and using, because we had a backhoe we needed to replace this budget year, so that's what we're getting.
That's fun.
Are you authorized to drive this?
Yeah, but I'll learn how.
Council members, do you have... You guys have any questions at all for...
Take a motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You have a motion?
Second.
Okay, now, do we have... Do you have any questions?
Are these budgeted items?
Yes, they are.
Ronnie, I believe you pointed out also in the work session that... And I'll ask it here, just so the public will know. The fact that these two departments bid... Made this bid collectively, it stands to reason that we've got a better deal than if one department had bid for one piece and another. Is that a common practice? And it seems to me that that's an advantageous way to go about it when you're trying to do, I guess, with volume.
Yeah, we try to, and we're told that we get a little better deal if we're, you know, buying more than one. We've collectively, all the gas and I think Public Works, we bid a bunch of the trucks together last... I'm not sure, last year or the year before, trying to work that angle.
Any other questions? Okay, let's vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And now we're on to item 7F. This is considering awarding bids for a... For one cabin chassis and one 60-foot aerial device. For the electric department, this is sponsored by Mr. Tony Peak.
Vice Mayor and Council, as we discussed in the work session on Monday, we're looking to buy a 2015-year model cabin chassis, which is the truck that will house on the second tabulation sheet. It's not available. You should be looking at it, though. Is the Boom, the aerial device, 60-foot in working height, that will be mounted on that cabin chassis. On the cabin chassis, Peach State Freight Liner was a low bidder, meeting specs, $83,445. Then on the 60-foot aerial device, Altech was the only one that met our spec, $160,335. This is a budget item, and I'd recommend your approval.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So I'm in.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions?
The product, the 60-foot aerial device from Altech, it does last quite a while, this is like a huge bucket. Do you remove those from like the cab chassis? I mean, they... Can they be transferred to a different cab chassis?
Yeah, we've done that quite a bit in the past. Generally, the Boom will last longer, obviously, than the cabin chassis. So we have in the past bought new cabin chassis, transferred the Boom over, but you have to have it rebuilt, given the age of it, too. But yes.
So when that happens, it'll take it back to Altech?
We generally bid that out, because there's multiple folks that'll do that. I think the truck, the cabin chassis and the Boom that this truck will replace has probably been through a couple of cabin chassis, and Boom's probably been rebuilt once or twice.
Any questions? If not, let's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, that ends our new business. It's on to item eight, which is an opportunity for citizens that request a hearing before the council. This is an opportunity for them to... They have expressed opinions or needs. They can have this moment in front of the council. We just ask that you limit your discussion to three minutes and let us know your name and that sort of stuff, so... Anybody out there? Any administrators want to get up and just, you know, talk about anything? Guys got anything planned for this weekend? Okay, great.
Mike, he has a lot to say.
Oh, that's right, that's right. He's wanting us to kind of hurry up, isn't he? Well, see, they got... House's mayor's comments. Okay. Any... There's an opportunity for one of our council members and city manager to, if they have any reports or statements they'd like to make.
We're going to have a busy weekend, I know that. We've got Blues and Brew Saturday. Then we've got a soccer tournament in town, Rotary, Upper Cumberland is... It's going to be... I think they have 52 teams involved with that. And there's a train excursion coming in again, so a lot going on this weekend.
Maybe we'll get some sunshine.
Yeah. I think we're supposed to have some...
Hey, sunshine. Be careful Saturday morning. Be careful Saturday morning if you're driving around, there's going to be about 400 or 500 people out there running a half marathon, so if you see... Police officer stops, you let these people run through, please. Okay, Mike, you can go now. You're up.
I'm up. All right. Mayor and council members, vice mayor and council members. As you recall, back a couple of months ago, council approved a capital outlay note. It's a $500,000 capital outlay note, and as part of that process, I am required to give you a report on the debt obligation. That's required by the state of Tennessee. We did close the loan. That loan was a... That debt was issued through Regions Bank. It was closed on December the 1st of 2014 at an interest rate of 1.33%. It is a three-year note. Will make annual principal payments over the next three years, and it will be fully matured on October 1st of 2017. Is used to purchase various equipment for the department, such as what Chief Evans mentioned earlier tonight, that you approved for him to purchase. And that's essentially it. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the capital outlay note and the process, if you have any.
Any questions? Council member? I like the interest rate. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
What time's the game start?
Play ball.
All right, let's meet adjourned.